We shall call our meeting to order. It is 6:30. Welcome back. It's September 5th. And we are back at our September school committee meeting. So, over the meeting, we'll go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance. We don't have any.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God in this law, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and we'll pull a couple of things out of order, but why don't we go ahead and just do the approval of minutes first? So entertaining a motion for the regular session June 3rd. So, such as, is there any discussion on the regular session?
It is.
Hearing none, all in favor? And entertaining a motion for the June 3rd executive session? So, second. Any discussion on the executive session? All in favor? Are there any abstentions? Is everybody here for that? So. Why don't we go ahead and pull out introduction of staff? Pull that out of order.
Yes, because I know we have people needing to be places.
Right.
So that would be great. So I am very pleased to introduce the new staff to Burgess.
A big crew here tonight.
We do, we do. I'll start off with Erica Blaze. Erica, go ahead just.
Erica is our special education teacher. She joins our special ed team. She's, this year, she's assigned primarily to kindergarten to provide support for special education students as well as integration for other students. She comes to us having seven years of experience at the Grow School and some previous teaching experience at Trinity. Welcome.
Welcome.
Jennifer Creelman. Jennifer has soccer practice right now.
Hey.
Jennifer joins us as an integration assistant. Previously, she has taught in Worcester and in Florida. Seven years of teaching experience in the past. So, welcome Jennifer. Alyssa Di Martino. Alyssa comes to us actually as a change of career. So we need our haircut. I think we can.
Oh, right.
And she actually recently completed her student teaching and did a long-term substitute stint in Holland. And she joins us as an EBE program assistant in our pathways continuum. And last, but certainly not least, Paul Garen. Paul is our new assistant principal. As you know, Jack will be retiring. His last day will be Friday the 13th. Paul comes to us, he was a teacher at St. Peter Marian and comes to us with 14, 16 years of administrative experience at the elementary school level.
Welcome Paul. Awesome. Welcome.
Welcome.
Welcome to all of you. We're thrilled to have you all here. We typically will introduce ourselves to new staff too. I'm Kate Alexander. I have a sixth grader and a fourth, no, third grader left in this building. Yes, a little down the street.
Each on the board thing.
Mary Beleza, I have a 10th grader and an 8th grader.
Unbelievable.
That is really horrifying sense. Megan Hannigan, an 8th grader at the junior high. I have a 6th grader here and two 4th graders.
Karen Koppel, and I have a 10th grader, a 6th grader, and a 5th grader.
Hi, I'm Kristen Toohey. I have a 6th grader and a 4th grader.
I left out my older ones. I just throw all the rest.
She has an 8th grader and a 10th grader.
11th grader.
11th grader. And I don't remember, 8, something.
8.
I'm just going every day.
One is driving, one is.
All I know is one is driving me crazy with their driving skills. All right, so we're going to go ahead and jump in. Don't feel like you're going, you're welcome to stay. But don't feel like you're going to offend any of us if you get up there.
We still all make you easy.
Have a great year tomorrow.
Nice meeting you all.
Next time, we get cookies, right? Just kidding. Let's jump to the financial report.
Okay, you have, you have the final for fiscal '19. You don't have the first one for '20 yet. But fiscal '19 shows where we ended. I don't think there's a lot of surprise. We were talking for the last couple of months in '19. We did everything that we wanted to do to kind of get ahead of the game. Topped off the oil tank, which is the reason for that shortfall on that line. Pre-purchased some supplies and materials that would have been from this budget. So that's good. Just a couple of notes. In your document, all year long, we talked about the speech therapists and contracted services that had shortfalls. But we knew there was going to be surplus in the teacher salary line due to some changing in staff. So we covered that fine. That special ed transportation continues to be a real thorn on our side. That is significantly short. I think about $50,000 of it is actually due to homeless or DCF placements that we need to provide transportation for. So we did this year budget a little bit more. I don't know that it was that much more. So we'll be watching it during the year. And utilities. The fuel costs have been creeping up only a little. So the overage there really is because of topping off and having fun. So we did everything we could there. But that shortfall we were happy to see is easily offset by the electricity balance. So just when we got a handle on the electricity line, the town entered into a number of net metering credit agreements that are finally starting to result in some reduced rates because of that, which is solar. So we may find ourselves next year able to at least reduce the electricity line, which is nice. And that was certainly the town's hope and intention. So in the end, we did everything we wanted to do, needed to do, and turned back to the town about $50,000, $43,000. So I think we ended fine last year. I didn't know here, and I do have to say, we are not starting off awesome this year. You know, it's a roller coaster in that whole special ed out-of-district placement world. And there have been a few over the summer that is putting us starting off as we're starting to uncover things significantly short. Short to the point that a couple of years ago, we were like already talking to the town, saying this might be a problem. I'm not that concerned yet because we are legally able to have circuit breaker reimbursement funds in a revolving fund. And there is a decent amount there. I'm not sure it shows here. I'll get you that balance next time. But I think the bottom line is, we'll be using a lot of that accumulated special ed reserve to get through some of these placements. So I think we're going to get through this year okay, as long as another monster won't happen. But where, what always makes me nervous is when we start this early in the year with significant shortfalls. I'm more concerned with the cliff that's sitting there when we start next year's budget. So that's just kind of a heads up.
Deb, do those determinations of placement happen, like rolling throughout the year as their IEP comes up for review?
Yes.
There's not like, it's just.
And unfortunately, so many of them happen in the second half of the year when we've already locked into, you know, either there's conversations that are just starting when we're committing to our budget or we find by year end that there are students that we're just not able to serve the way we want to with our in-house services and, you know, they just blow out by the year end.
It's not, it's not always tied to the function of an annual meeting. Sometimes it's a crisis situation that occurs and a child insup. But it's hospitalized and then we have to make a change.
And very often, the crises will happen maybe mid-year.
Right.
But we'll say, okay, we need some time to figure out where the right placement is.
Can they come back?
You know, trying to, can they come back in? Or can they do one of our little in-district either pathways or STARS programs? And often, it's year end or summer before it's determined with some trial placements that it's just not going to work. So that, for the most part, is what's happened. Because any move-ins, any move-ins in Massachusetts after April 1st that were placed someplace else in their, in their previous town, that town would pay for, for the first year. So the kind of general rule of thumb is, in Massachusetts, if you already budgeted to pay for someone after April 1st, you pay for it. Because we can't make it up. But the same would happen for us if somebody moved out over the summer that was placed elsewhere, we would still be paying for them this year. That didn't happen.
And also keep in mind, it's kids, children from all the way up to 12th grade.
Right.
Right. That is part of our budget.
That effectively, it just all sits in elementary budget. So Sturbridge only pays for Sturbridge students.
Would you ever break it down into how many kids it is actually at the elementary school? I know it's, because people don't, I don't think, think of it that way. Where when we talk about it, it is kids.
Yeah.
You know, through 20, is it 12th grade or 21st?
How, what, I usually have a listing and I certainly can have, well, I, you know, we never share students' names and really even placements because a placement can be.
I don't know, looking for specifics.
Well, we can tell you, but that's like, how many total students and how many are elementary.
But like a mid-year crisis, social, emotional placement for a 17-year-old could just be that.
Well, and remember, I mean, the true special ed services starts at two years and nine months and goes to 22.
Right.
So if it's a very involved, severe placement, that Sturbridge has one, maybe two, but at least one residential placement, that is very possibly going to be ours until age 22.
Right. Considering that some of these are Union 61 placements, Burgess, children that would be eligible to be educated at Burgess based on age and grade, we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, which percentage-wise is wonderful. It's a very low percentage.
Is that counting the students in Pathways?
No.
See, that's also the issue. If you'll remember, I talked to you folks last year, that tuition is a Pathways tuition for all of Sturbridge. So anyone in Pathways is showing up in the tuition line as opposed to the staff elsewhere.
Yeah.
Exactly. So in that, again, we dealt with a big bump in the budget process because we talked about how your Pathways programs has, this year, I think, just two students from outside?
No. No, we have, well, between Step and, being in Pathways, we have five.
Okay. Well, that, and that grew a little over the summer then. Because historically.
Yeah, we have three of them age-in.
Historically, the reason we have this core program here, Sturbridge is, we can pull in kids from the other four and bill them, but we bill everybody. So we try to figure out what's the cost, bill everyone. So it shows up as a tuition. When we were building this budget, there were far less other Union 61 students coming in and paying tuitions. That was really a program that has increased in Sturbridge numbers. But those, we had all kind of locked in when we built this budget. So the problem we're having is definitely out-of-district placements on students that some of them were on the radar and some, you know, just we didn't necessarily anticipate. Or they changed, they were at a collaborative placement and it's not working out and we need to go to a more intensive one. So that'll all show up in black and white next month when we finally get everything encumbered.
Okay. Any other questions on the financials? We have communications.
Just a thank you to Chief Board, Bush Jackson, couple DPW and police for their help during the winter for keeping us all safe and being great, easy to access folks regarding road conditions. The MASC bulletin is in there. And again, you probably likely got one at home. But a reminder that the MASC and MSS joint conference is November 6th through the 9th. And if you're interested in attending, you can shoot me an email. Brenda McHan, let us know and we are happy to sign you up. You don't have to go for all of the days. If there is a day, you go on the website and you just want to go for Thursday, you can just let us know that to us. So whatever you would like. There is some information on the new Blue Book evaluation for the superintendent's evaluation. And so that's just.
Another one.
I know, I know, because everyone was so much fun at the first one, which is nuts. And then just school committee roles as voted with the board. But look to get everybody to know. At the first meeting, just a reminder.
Did the Tantascor position ever get filled?
It did not. There were two folks who had applied and the meeting was set, the joint meeting between the Board of Selectmen and the remaining Sturbridge folks. And both of the candidates ended up withdrawing. So the plan is to now go back to the posting again. And I actually just talked to Andrea Menzies today, this afternoon. So likely post in the next day or two. And then at one of the October Board of Selectmen meetings, maybe on the 7th and the 21st, meet again for that. But there were two candidates who ultimately go for 3-1 right before.
Just everybody on the committee, you can be on both committees. You can actually run for both committees. There's no, you're not true. Just in case anybody has an interest in that.
Yeah, so look for the posting. It will be on our website as well. The town is the one who generates the posting, but we put it on our website also. So I'm going to, I'm going to guess of close to six weeks.
Okay. Okay, we will go to Mrs. Pelley's report.
Welcome back, everyone. Off to a good start, I believe. Mike and Dan feel like we're doing well. Already made our introductions. I'll just touch on a couple of the highlights from my report. Enrollment is stable. We're actually over 900 again, but definitely consistent with what we had for last year. Kindergarten is a little bit larger than what was the year before. And that's noted in the totals. Recognition is just a huge thank you to the custodial staff, the administrative assistants, the building technologists, and just the entire staff on getting the school ready. We had lots of summer programming going on. So thanks to all of those folks. Congratulations to Erin Parker, Emily Parent, and Alicia Peck for obtaining Google Educator LEAD Level 1 certification, which was, I have to tell you, pretty intense. And also congratulations to Beth Park, Nadine Kevell, and Erin Parker for completing the project Lead the Way training over the summer that was held at WPI. Curriculum instruction and assessment. I have mapped out what each grade will be having for units under the Project Lead the Way. My hope is that by November, we're not starting until next Monday, that by our November committee meeting, that one or all of the teachers will be able to come in and just give you an update as to what's going on within Project Lead the Way. Also, in the November meeting, we will be talking about the MCAS scores. We currently have embargoed information. I actually don't know the date of public release off the top of my head, but that will be coming along as well. Open house is coming, my favorite night of the year. You know that. It's such a great night here. So we look forward to seeing you all on the 12th. And I think that's about it.
Any questions?
I have a question. Did I miss the whole, there's no more health class? Or what's the deal with that?
So Project Lead the Way, Nadine Kevell is going to be teaching health through Project Lead the Way. So she has biomedical units that will be coming in for health. And we will still be going forward with our anti-bullying curriculum. So she'll be handling that as well.
Okay, so how does that?
She has time in her schedule. So like she's going to, she'll be doing her health curriculum with kindergarten starting next week. And then I believe it's, she'll be starting within the next few weeks with grades 1 through 3 with their second step, the Tier 1 and Social Emotional interventions.
So do your kids, they'll just have like a seminar or a board?
They don't go on a rotation, but will be out of the special subjects rotation.
It's not a special running course.
Correct. She's out of the special subjects rotation.
Okay. But is it the same curriculum or is it different?
She will be teaching what the required curriculum from it. But it will be also biomedical engineering type of things that get touched upon in health as well as in science class.
Do you have any, like, I don't even know what that means. So does there any write-up on what that means biomedical?
Yeah, I can actually provide you.
I remember seeing the picture of the plate on my kids' work. I don't know.
I will actually provide you with descriptions of the Project Lead the Way units.
Yep, that'd be awesome.
I can actually, and as I said, well, hopefully they'll all be able to join us in November to give you the feedback.
Yeah, that would be great.
Have we switched to corners or back out? Where the report cards are still kind of.
Any other questions for the principal report section?
Okay, superintendent's report. So also wanted to thank everybody. We had a great opening. We may end the week too, but just a great job. And it takes a lot of work, especially our custodians and the support leadership over the summer. And then the transition to the teachers who, you know, come in whenever they can in the summer, whenever we let them. And we try and keep them out for projects. But been a great opening so far. A couple reminders, the joint retreat. This is the combination Union 61 and Tantascor retreats that has been discussed at a number of meetings. The date is set for Saturday, October 19th. This is an opportunity to, in the morning session, work on kind of the overall goals, responsibilities, how a good school committee functions, if you will. Feel free to chime in. That would be kind of a, almost workshop-type morning. And then the afternoon, whether it will be the start of reviewing mission, vision, goals, talking about what would, what do we all see as a grade 12 Tantascor graduate? What's kind of our ideal of what the sort of end result is? And how do we lay out foundation here at the elementary school? So it's going to be the first time that we're trying at 8:30 to probably 3, 3:30, I think.
Yeah, I think it's realistic.
Probably 9 to 3, everything.
Feed you in the middle, it'll be happy. It is going to be at the host.
Oh, really?
So we walk in at the host. And yes, kind of, it kind of, school committee team building in the morning, lunch. And then the afternoon, we're looking at district, mission, vision. There's a, it's a product. I believe it's kind of a process slash product out there called Portrait of a Graduate, which we're not necessarily committing to jump into and pay for. But something, and we'll have, we'll have a facilitator who's very familiar with the process. So he will help guide us through what that looks like. It's kind of a springboard to what should our, you know, next 10-year mission, vision goal with? And it really should start with where do we want to get the graduate? What is the portrait of the graduate? But it'll be the, just the beginning of, I'm sure, many discussions throughout the year.
So if we can just save the date, once the agenda is solidified, the facilitator is Tony Bent, who's retired, superintendent from Shrewsbury. So he gets great reviews from other folks who have brought him. So save the date for now, but we'll get to that agenda once it's solidified. 6th grade field trip update, you'll actually see under Old Business. So whether it's a combination of the Warrior Welcome update, we started that planning, that's that large transitional event that we're going to do in the spring. We have picked a date for that. The principals are actually very excited. The high school students, whether it's StuCo, NHS, are all in to help out. So we anticipate, well, we just started the conversations, excuse me, kind of brainstorming what that night would look like. Pretty excited about that. And I know that each of the elementary schools are looking at other trip options, day, longer days. I know some are talking theaters, some are talking actually not Burgess per se, but heading to other Project O itself or that type of aquarium or an enhanced with, with an opportunity for a boat to have some on-the-sea interaction for that. So I suspect that, Kathy, you give some updates on.
We will. Next month, we will have some, some more information. I'll be meeting with the 6th grade team and School Improvement Council so to help to, you know, so we have representation from teachers and from parents to have some conversation about what we'll be doing for this coming year and moving forward.
Do we have a vote on that as well?
The school committee, no. We're not going to send people the budget and the superintendent. I'm just tired of it.
The SWEC.
Yeah, I mean, there's so many, obviously. I don't think I've ever turned away anyone.
Happy to take it.
Of course.
Appreciate the input.
Yeah.
The SWEC third quarter report was sent electronically. And I can't recall whether it was the beginning of June, but those are items that we, just a way for us to keep you updated on the collaborative as we are one of the member districts. Superintendent Goals Subcommittee, this again is something that was a reference back in the summer. A meeting never really came about. Having talked to Megan Cunningham, the Union 61 Chair, and Mike Donzola, I think they were kind of on the fence as to whether, do we do something before the retreat? Do we actually wait for the retreat to kind of shape a foundation for something? So kind of to be continued on that. Kate, you were the representative, which I'm assuming that all five of the elementary representatives will remain the same for that. But more to come as far as a date and trying to get that together. And again, as you saw, the MASC has now a new report evaluation. So we'll see if that's at all useful to anybody. And, yeah, I know. And when we last met in June, we just said we would update you. This will probably be the last sort of formal time. But the project for the middle school windows and doors, again, not specifically Germaine or under the purview of this committee, but you send your 6th graders up to the middle school. So you'll be happy to know that the MSBA fully approved our project. So we are meeting pretty much on every other week. We are putting the bid specs together. That's what we talked about today. So by next, the project would actually go forward and be done next, probably the minute after school gets out in June, it would start. And then go as quickly as they can. But it's a full replacement of all exterior doors and all the windows at the middle school. So we're fortunate to have got that project. The majority of those windows and doors, as you recall, have not been replaced or upgraded in the four years that the building's been standing. So it's, not just efficiencies, security, all sorts of.
Good stuff.
Yeah. Good facelift. Yes, a very good facelift. And all five of our districts did support this through their town meetings. So we're very fortunate. We included our court team, I think, for both of them on that. And I think that's it for now. We're just again trying to get the school up and running. And so far, still good.
Well, you happened to be mentioning the junior high school. I'm just, the, I call it the junior high.
Yep.
It's called the middle school. I'm just curious how many ceiling tiles were taken versus how many were thrown away? Because it took out a life of a dog.
Some were still there.
And it blew my mind that somehow I have lasted, you know, 46 years without getting my ceiling tile back. And I don't know what I would do with it, but it definitely had energy on social media.
I can, well, everyone had the opportunity.
Oh, I know.
We advertised, we did absolutely everything we could to do it. It was in the paper, it was on our website. We had a big banner out in the front of the school.
Oh, yeah.
We had our principals call, so we tried.
I was just curious, how many were taken?
A number were taken. I can get you the exact number.
Oh, I don't want the exact. It was just, I was just curious.
I would say.
Don't break it down for a second.
Maybe a couple hundred that would actually.
Whether they were their own or someone just says.
You break it up like last graduation.
Oh, my.
I thought you don't have anywhere like fan base versus.
Oh, my goodness.
Coin order. I want to get home today. Let's get back to Burgess.
There were a lot of fan-based ones. Joe has decided to leave in some of the Walmart. But there were quite, quite a few. Jay Guile's band, Merrill is still up on the wall. Anybody at that middle school who attends as a child probably knows what Jay Guile's band is. But there were probably maybe a little over 100 that were taken. A number were able to be saved. And what Mrs. Willard did was try and select them from different years, different grades. And we purchased enough of the fire retardant treatment sealer so that we could keep some character in the building to do it. We just really, it, the cost was something like close to $10,000 or $15,000 to buy that.
Between product and the labor.
And the labor, because we had to obviously have folks put it on. So.
But there is still some.
There is a presence. And we actually have someone who had asked about how much a container would cost because their civic organization is looking into possibly donating, you know, $400 for, which would actually allow Mrs. Willard to continue the project with the understanding that we're going to do it really with donated.
All new ones have to be.
Would have to be treated. And we had our fire inspection and they were very happy.
If they were true. If they were treated, okay.
And we have, we have, we put the date and who treated them on the back, so if you actually take down the title.
You can know how it was treated.
Trained, yes.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, but it was a great, and Carol Willard, who's the middle school art teacher, junior high art teacher, really just did a tremendous job at coordinating all that. As I said, on opening day, it was a labor of love, really from the heart. And it was important that we try and get folks to take them, because it's their love, so.
Very cool.
Thank you.
We are, I'm sorry. We are public access, that's true. I just, I have the ability to ask that question. I love a question. What you got for us? Got nothing. Subcommittee reports. Tantascqua representative, who covered the ceiling tile.
No meeting.
Yeah, we didn't meet yet.
Oh, hey, we wouldn't have met, yeah.
Exactly, so that really was the Tantascqua report. And I cannot remember in June, like, we met within days, so, because they met the first week, exactly.
Because I couldn't meet.
Because it was a joint meeting.
The joint meeting.
So it may not have even been the day after.
It was Monday, it was Thursday, but it was, yes.
Old business.
So I'll just update you on, it is an ongoing. Principals had their first meeting over the summer, principals and central office staff. And even though it's an elementary event, we had Mike Lucas come, because he is really excited about having student council and NHS involved. So we're going to make it an agenda item for our leadership meeting every month this year, as we keep trying to put the logistics. So the first meeting was really just brainstorming, other than we have confirmed the date will be Friday, May 15th, which is truly the only Friday night that that building isn't occupied between April and June. And the, what I, yeah, I don't want to share enough people to deliver, but I'm pretty sure we can deliver. The one thing that we feel pretty confident that we want to do and should be able to do is actually transport kids right from here up to the high school on that Friday afternoon. So we'll work out the logistics of transportation, but they'll literally leave here and go up to the school. We're looking at a nine to 10-ish, we're still trying to work on how to logistically figure out the activities between the fieldhouse and the outside course. Please, we want no, we want no rain, because it'd be awesome to put them all on turf fields in the spring for some of those activities. And so we're going to keep working on it, but the important things are May 15th, May 15th, May 15th. So we're starting to spread the word. Principal's going to spread the word. We'll spread the word to all rec, rec leagues. Mr. Lucas is literally clearing that up at the high school, so no games will be scheduled at the high school. And, and we'll be having the high school kids involved in some icebreakers and some, some of the activities. So principal's getting pretty excited about it, actually. So we'll keep you posted each month. We're all going to meet each month, so we'll come back to you each month and let you know, you know, how it's going.
Awesome.
Yep, it'll be fun.
I also have an item under old business, bringing back report cards and talking about especially the, you know, I just, I really love an update and some traction on getting a fifth and sixth grade report card that's a lot more both student and parent friendly, not just standards based.
We talked six, about sixth grade being the grade that really needs it, certainly as they go to seventh grade. So Jody Barasa is working, putting a committee together. It's also a standing item on our leadership team to try and see if we can find a good hybrid tool out there. The principals are on board, understand as part of the umbrella of transition that it really, we really have to make sure that we can get sixth grade children's head around. A new assessment system.
That effort equals output of something better. Can we get another, can we get an update on it by October, do you think?
I can tell-
Because then we'll almost be through a trimester, right? Like when there's a virtual.
Yeah, I don't know that we'd be able to get it together for-
Jody will be here in November.
Together for the year.
So maybe we'll have something there. And the other thing that we have going on, Michael, is Jupiter Grades. So the sixth grade teachers, on a voluntary basis, to the extent that they want to use it at the beginning, right, will be accessing Jupiter Grades and recording information. You know, one of the things that I encourage everybody to consider was, like, even if they just wanted to do the missing assignment, some, some content areas, such as math and even social studies and science, will lend itself better to the Jupiter Grades than our ELA with our standards-based report card. But they'll be able to, you know, getting that system in place so that you're, you're seeing information.
This year?
Yes.
Will there be any references to this this year, though?
I know we've ordered it.
We've got a bit of information, but nothing.
Okay.
The issue is that-
Sure we can. We can, they can do whatever they want. They can absolutely add, like, additional fields of American grades.
It would, it's going to have to be a completely separate document. That's what the issue is. IPASS, which is our student information system, right now generates that form, so teachers can electronically put in the grades. IPASS, the vendor, has to actually go and create, which is not, not a quick turnaround. So it would likely be, if we're able to get anything for the first trimester, and if not that, the second trimester would have to be supplemental. We just don't have the time.
And we talked, great, because it's been a couple of years that, like, our constituents have been asking for it, so I certainly would love an update and keep it on the radar if there's any-
Yeah, it definitely is.
Feedback we can give our kids this year.
I do think Jupiter Grades will help in giving you a clear idea as to the way they, as to whether- And will they be noticed or notified who, what teachers are doing this, and when would that be implemented? They actually don't even have the subscription yet. That was just recently ordered, I believe.
Yeah, we were more asked if we were interested.
Yeah, and everybody, everybody was interested to an extent, correct? Okay, and did you talk about how you might use it, or did you get that far?
I think we were kind of just waiting until we knew that they have, just everything about it, yeah.
I know that a couple of-
I think someone wanted to come show us, somebody who's familiar with it.
Well, so we did reach out to the junior and senior high, and the teachers got tremendous positive feedback. I saw a couple of the email exchanges. So we'll, you know, again, step into it, again, using, utilizing it to the step that they're comfortable with. Because ELA is much harder to do than math.
To put it that way.
Michael teaches ELA. It's much, it would be much harder to actually use that as a grading system. But math or science and social studies, where you have different types of quizzes and tests.
But it's also good for students to see these assignments. I mean, there are teachers at the junior high who don't use it for grades.
It's exactly, and that, and that was my conversation with sixth grade. If for nothing else, you can record the missing assignments. So when do we think that might actually start?
In the next few weeks, I would say.
The training is not that difficult, because, and now, we don't, when the original group started up at junior high, it was really teacher-led, but we had to get involved with it. Now, so many of our teachers at Tantascqua use it, that they're going to be a resource to-
Where the classroom?
Yep, so it is, it's beyond on the radar. It's, it has forward progress, so.
Good.
Any other old business?
Along those lines of the, the reading and math assessments that we do several times during the year, we, I remember we had talked about-
Adding the star.
About sending those home to certain groups, and I think there was a-
We do.
Highlight of, about sending those home. Is there any talk of sending those to the general?
To the general?
There is talk about sending them to the general. We actually, this year, are shifting from one, grades one through four anyways. We're shifting from the classroom teachers doing the assessments, the remedial math, and reading teachers are actually currently doing that task, and that will lead us to that next step, so that you'll get the STAR report, or, you know.
It would be great. That, that, that's a step even towards the more parent-friendly. And if you're lucky enough, you have a teacher that you can say, hey, I understand, I know how to read these. Can you show the, and some teachers will cover them at the parent-teacher conferences. I find them incredibly valuable, because it's a good benchmark assessment, and it's kind of a little bit more of like the hybrid that some of us are more, find easier to read. So, I mean, even if we're able to get them.
Another piece of information that will make it easier is that we've STAR changed their whole interface, Renaissance, which is the vendor that provides us with STAR testing. And we will be actually participating in a training on September 18th. The reports are much easier to, because I think, I think all of you have actually sat in my office and watched me have to pull up a report, which is rather labor-intensive. What I've been able to ascertain so far is the reports are much easier to, to prepare and to print. So we will be training on that, and that will actually help facilitate that process.
And we're also looking to assess, not just against a grade level equivalent, but against an MBS expectation. So we're hoping this will platform with the training next week or the week after. It'll be a lot of work to cover that, so.
You say that is for grades one through four, or?
One through four, definitely for this year.
And new business, other than I would entertain a motion for policy GDI upon first reading.
We're looking to rescind.
To rescind GDI.
The contract has completely different language and it has for years.
Now I recognize.
And then going through, we just discovered that there's actually a policy.
Do you really just rescind on first reading? Isn't a rescind-
Well, there'll be two, so you'll have to rescind twice.
So rescind upon first reading policy GDI, I would entertain a motion, so, in a second. Any discussion?
And by law, Mary says, wait a minute, this hasn't, it's not in Tantascqua. It's just, we just found it in a couple of, in a couple of the elementaries that it's just obsolete and, you know, inaccurate.
Public access two? You two. I'll say one thing, the Burgess Fair race, Christine would kill me if I don't mention it.
Oh, thank you.
It's Sunday, the 22nd of September.
Yes, it is.
And it's uphill always, but if you dare, you still have time by the 6th to get a tee-shirt, so sign us for it. That's tomorrow, yeah. You have to tomorrow to get the free tee-shirt.
It's great again. It's a wonderful place.
And we can ride our bikes.
She's simply, she's simply amazing.
She's awesome.
It's, it's a mammoth undertaking, but she has it, you know, year two, it's like just wonderfully well organized.
Mr. Jones will stay with me the whole time. He'll laugh me three times over.
I unfortunately decided concussion.
Oh, no, those soccer guys. Those crazy soccer guys.
Not sure, up in the air.
We're just going to go with the previous commitment.
Good excuse, right?
Or already committed to.
That's a way around something else.
Yeah, there you go. Is there any other public access? None, motion to adjourn.
So move.
Set a ticket. On favor.
I don't know.
Can you join me this year?
They're crazy, that soccer group. They're crazy insane.